Welcome to Minot Talk here at the Dakota and I'm Jonathan Starr.
Oh, I'm Kyler Callum. How you doing Jonathan?
It was an eventful Thanksgiving, but it's good to be back at the office today.
That's good. How was Monday then? If it was an eventful Thanksgiving, how was yesterday? Was it a Monday of all Mondays?
It was. I uh, I felt awful. I was sick, man.
Yeah, you're getting over something. I'm just starting something. It's perfect timing.
Right.
It's how you know winter is really here.
I hate being sick after the holidays because people always will conclude that, you know.
It's your fault. You got everyone sick.
Well, yeah, there's that, but that like it's like, yeah, you got yourself sick because of what you did on the holidays.
Yeah, you over. Is it? You didn't overexert yourself?
I've never drank alcohol in my life, so there's none.
I'm not saying this has to be from that. Physical exhaustion can lead to sickness.
No sickness there.
Okay.
Um, physical exhaustion, maybe a little bit, stretch myself maybe slightly further than normal.
Just a hair.
But it was mostly the same. Somebody broke my chair while I was gone.
It's probably me.
But you know, there's been a lot of things that have been weird in the office today. So who knows?
It's perfect. It's my fault because I recorded a video last week that I might put out. I don't know yet.
Probably was about a community survey.
It was. I said, so if you're interested in me like spending 40 minutes looking through the community survey.
Breaking it down.
Let me know. I'll, I'll drop that here. I'll re-record the intro and I'll release it tomorrow or something.
Very interesting.
Got some fun stuff to talk about today. The city council meeting, of course. It's the first Monday of the month. That was, uh, it was only two hours long.
Wow, breaking records.
It was. On top of that, unfortunately Gordy Crazy Fingers Linquist passed away over the weekend. North Dakota legend. Uh, have to talk about him a little bit then, as well as we had some big political announcements in the state.
He did. They're starting to come out.
It's happening and a very notable political figure in North Dakota announced. Maybe that's a better way to put it, but.
Yeah, I don't know if anybody assumed, but it sounded like after his last run, he said he was going to be out of the political space for a bit. And he was till the next race.
Yeah, you know, a year and a half. Yeah. Plus, you know, he's, he's not teaser teaser for later. He's not running for national politics.
And I think that's the difference.
Yep. It's gonna be a little different, but do you want to start there? Do you want to start with?
Why not?
Let's do it then.
Dr. Rick Becker says that he's running for the legislature. He doesn't know what's chamber um, in District seven.
But he'll be either in this, running for the House or the Senate in D seven.
Right. So interesting. Um, some have said that this is what conservatives need, another strong voice. He's not somebody that gets behind everything that Trump says. So he is a little bit of a unicorn there. He kind of uh, charts his own path. And I, I think that's good. Um, especially at the state level where we don't try to need to have the influence of national politics going into our state. It will happen, but it doesn't need to be in everything. So I think, I think that'd be positive. Obviously you can go look back and see his record and what he's done. Some, some have enjoyed him, some have not, but he's always been outspoken. And I, I think that's good because you can definitely hear where your legislators stand. So I think that overall is probably a good thing. And excited to see how that plays out.
Yeah.
Um, I did say, and I wasn't trying to throw any hard stones, but he did run against Julie Fedorcheck. And at the end of that, he made it in his concession speech of, I believe it was, he made a small statement saying that he was going to step away for a bit. And, and he did. And whatever that means to him is great. So.
A little bit can be very subjective.
Right. Yep. So, so I think that's fine.
Yeah. And Dr. Rick Becker, of course, he's a plastic surgeon out of Bismarck, but what he's most notable for, he was in the state legislator for about 10 years. He was a representative in the state legislator. Then in 2022, now he's a Republican, of course, and then in 2022, he challenged Senator John Hoven for the Senate seat as an independent, got like almost 20% of the votes.
Yeah, but he was like a thousand at the state convention. He was like less than a thousand, sorry, less like a hundred or 200 votes away from being the endorsed candidate.
And that was a big event, that state convention. There was a lot of controversy that took place there. I don't, I don't know the full story of it, but I, I don't know if any one person does, but it's one of those things. And then fast forward two years from that race to a year and a half ago in 2024, uh, when he runs against uh, Julie Fedorcheck for the Republican primary for the US House seat. Uh, it was a four-way race. It was her, Alex Blaz, Caramund, and then Rick Becker as well. Uh, really interesting race there, but Julie Fedorcheck, of course, ended up winning that. And so when Rick Becker started talking about, hey, he's going to make another announcement. A lot of people, at least myself, first initial thought was he's going to try to challenge her again or something.
Right. Cause that'd be coming up next year.
Yep. That is the only national thing on our docket for next year's election cycle.
And some were hoping he would run for mayor of Bismarck, but evidently he was outside of the city limits.
Ah, fair. But I mean, one of those, that's going to be up next year too. There's already been a few people that have announced to put their hat in the ring for that race. Just like here in Minot, we have our mayor race again next year.
I haven't heard many candidates yet.
I know Mayor Janser will be, yeah, he will be running again. And as of the end of um, the election cycle, it sounded like Josiah Royce plans to run again, but we'll see how that plays out come next summer or springtime. And then on top of that, of course, here in Minot, we have uh, it's the odd districts that are up for election this coming year. So District three and District five, uh, in District three in Minot here, most, a lot of the eastern side of this town, you're going to have uh, State Senator uh, Bob Paulson, along with Representatives Jeff Hoovers and Lori Van Winkle.
And they, have any of them announced that they're running yet?
I don't think officially, but I don't think.
And so I, I think that the most of them will, but I think we should also be wait to make sure that they declare.
Yeah. And there's been some, there's been some rumblings that it sounds like there's going to be some other people that threw their hat in the ring in District three as well.
Definitely sounds that way.
I, I would, I would expect to see some, a contested primary.
Yeah, definitely contested. Definitely contested. We'll find out if it's competitive.
Yeah, that's, I think that's a great way to put it. It, how competitive it ends up being is a different story, but it's definitely, the way it sounds as of right now, it's going to be contested. Then also on top of that, we have District five here in town, which is uh, southeast Minot and central Minot, kind of a lot of residential area in that. It's the smallest land size district in Minot. That is Senator Randy Burkhart, Representatives Jay Fisher and Scott Lauser. Uh, very experienced team on that end. I think a couple of them are nearing their term limits at this point. But I think they're, they're all still, I know they're all still eligible to run at least one more term.
So it's their last round.
At least I, I think Jay Fisher might be a year, uh, he might have an extra one on them. Didn't he get in a little bit later than the other two? I'd have to double check. I can't actually have it pulled up here. Am I talking out my?
But does it matter?
Not necessarily.
It doesn't? Because if you serve at all.
If it's, because it starts when the, in 22, I think, right?
Yeah, just if you served, then you're, that's a term.
That's true. Yep. And he, she's, you know, since 2019.
Then you're going for your second term at least.
Yep. It, it'll be the last one for at least that current um, cycle that they're in or house that they're in. Uh, but that's going to be Minot's big things to watch out for next year. Of course, city council as well on the docket, uh, county commission, park board, uh, school board as well. Going to have, I think there's going to be two school board seats. I know there's three city council seats. There's two Ward County Commission seats. And then I think it's one park board seat this year.
Right for park board.
Hey, maybe we'll see what happens. It could be fun.
Uncommittal. Interesting. Heard it here first, folks.
If you run with, if you run with me, I'll.
Or a park board? Yeah, if there's only one seat, I'll do it.
Yeah, one of us will get it then.
I hope we will both be like negative campaigning ourselves.
Never even campaign.
You don't want me because, do not vote for Jonathan because.
It's like Trading Places, vote for no one. No, that's not Trading Place, Brewster's Millions with Eddie Murphy. You got it mixed up, but still regardless, point stands.
It'd be hilarious.
We just don't campaign until everyone not to vote for us and we still end up.
Well, one of us, well, there could be other people that run.
Yeah, of course.
The more you say, don't vote for you, the more people are going to vote for you.
It's, it's how it's, it's like reverse psychology, man.
It'd be terrible.
It'd be interesting. I think it could be fun. Make like a vlog, the whole thing. Be entertaining.
In a different life, in a different time, that might be something we would do.
Hey, but I don't know about this one.
Yeah, I don't know about this one.
But I think that's the rundown for a lot of the legislative stuff at the state side.
Do you have any thoughts on Becker throwing his hat in the ring?
I, I, I think it's, it's interesting. He's a very knowledgeable guy. I can't wait to see how this primary race goes. If um, both incumbents from that district do end up running again, I think that'll be interesting to see how competitive it is. And what, I'm sure they'll end up being a debate or two down in the business.
Does he run for Senate or House?
He's already been in the House, so I, I would, I would just gut feeling feels like Senate, but we'll see how it plays out.
Yeah.
I feel like, and this is total speculation, whatever he thinks will be the more likely path is probably what he'll end up going for. But that's, you know, pure speculative gut feeling on my part.
I don't know if I agree with you on that one.
Don't think so? Think he might just go for?
Because what you have to remember is that in District seven, you have Senator Michelle Axman, Representative Jason Doctor, and Representative Matthew Hillman. Hillman is somebody that historically probably would fall closer into the same thinking as Becker. They might be in the same camp somewhat. Not trying to overly tie them together.
Jason Doctors obviously had a lot of um, his own things come up.
And, and Senator Axman has not, like sometimes, there's not always an agreement with stuff that's going on there. So it, he could run for Senator just simply because of that, to try to DC that, although she'll be very difficult to.
She is a very, one of the more well-known names in the state legislature.
Very strong incumbent. So that would be a lot of work on that side. Um, but it'll be interesting to see how that, that plays out for sure.
Yeah, I look forward to it. Well, we'll definitely be following along.
Yes, we will.
Throughout the rest of this year, see who else is jumping into that ring. Uh, but that brings us back here to Minot.
Minot.
The, the Minotians here. The Minotters? Okay, but I got, I got.
The Minot minutia.
I, I, yeah, I gotta go back and ask a question here. I gotta pose this.
I'll give you an answer.
Is it Minotters or Minotians?
Oh, come on. It's definitely Minotters.
I, I like Minotters better. I think Minotians might be like the technical census term.
Yeah, but that's because people don't know us. They, they trying to mess up the name Minot.
I like Minotters better.
Because it actually, like Oregonian, that's where I'm originally from, Oregon, Oregonian, like that flows, right? The, what are you calling it? Minotian is changing how you say Minot. It's not fair.
I agree with that.
If it was Minotian, then maybe it won't even sound right, but yeah, maybe.
It doesn't flow then, but you throw it back. And like when I was writing some articles earlier this year about like a lot of.
No, not in a while.
About a lot of old newspaper clippings that I was looking through. A lot of times back in the day, they would refer to my, people in Minot as Minotters. And you don't see that nearly as much anymore. And I, I don't know why.
The people in Minot.
I, I, I like Minotters. So from now on, I'm officially going to refer to Minotians as Minotters from here on out.
Well, I think we are Minotters. So I think the correct way to say that is you're going to refer to Minotters as Minotters.
Yes. I, I will. That is my now committed way of.
If you have a different view on that, let us know in the comments. We'd love to hear. That's actually an interesting discussion.
And here's my segue. This was, this was mentioned at city council last night.
You uh, you love to use that word.
A little bit, yeah. Remember we talked about that last week?
Yeah, me too. I remember that.
Yeah, or two weeks ago. Yeah, but I'm segueing to another topic via connected points. So at city council last night, they had uh, both of the commanders from Minot Air Force Base there and they both spoke. And one of them referred to us as Minotians, which isn't anywhere out of the ordinary, but it sparked that question in my mind again. So that's why I had to bring it up, which on top of that all, that brings me to say that Minot was announced as a, is honored as being the great American defense community of the year. And so if you watched city council last night, which unfortunately video didn't process, we couldn't download it in time, but there's a really cool video that they put out there uh, of the city of Minot that they filmed over the summer. Uh, through the great American defense community and that program, uh, it was really, really nice to see, really cool video, went all around town, highlighted a bunch of stuff. Saw quite a few friends of the show on there. So shout out all you guys that made it onto that. That was really cool. They highlighted Citizens Alley, um, the mural downtown, really cool thing.
One day, yeah, that's pretty cool. That's pretty awesome.
I was a fan. After that, uh, then, yeah, like I said, both of the commanders from base got up to speak. They both spoke about, you know, Minot, what it means to the base, what the base does for the community, vice versa, all that kind of thing. Uh, and then First District Health came up. They had their, like every couple of months, they'll have a little spiel that they come up and update the city on. And then the consent items came, but there was a couple that were polled. It was item 16 and 19. Uh, with those two, actually before I get that, I just got one, one funny thing kind of popped up. It was with um, item uh, number five. It was one of the uh, planning commissions items, which is normally just, you know, they, they gets approved and passed with no, no thoughts. And Mayor Janser uh, brought the item up and no one approved or motioned to approve it. It just was silence for a couple of seconds. So Janser's leaning forward, can we get a, are we looking for a motion to carry this? And then finally a couple, I think Fuller also stepped up and did it. And I was like, that's, it just struck me as a little funny note that only Kyler would probably find that way, but.
Probably.
Uh, this, item 16 that they polled was how the CIP plan uh, ranks and evaluates different policy plans and for.
Capital improvement plan?
What they want to actually build and how they rank that. And one interesting thing came from this Alderman Blessam motioned to reduce the economic development portion of it from being weighted at 20% down to 10% and then move that extra 10% to a couple of other places. It's a really cool thing. It also, yeah, it did pass 22 because yeah, there's only six present last night.
Doesn't matter. There's four votes.
There, yes, Alderman, uh, no, Mayor Janser sided with Alderman Blessam, Samuelson and Janser on that one.
Yeah.
So that was interesting. And then the whole item as itself passed as a whole. Then after that, there was a little update with Nas and the cost on that. There were delays the summer as we can all tell. There isn't water coming from it yet. I know crazy story. So it sounds like next year now for Nas. So that's, that was updated.
Stuck on Broadway. Yeah, right. Never got past construction.
Exactly. Got to south end of town. I was like, well, what now? After that, one interesting thing too uh, came up was with the fire department. They had a budget amendment for some new doorways in there. Originally they were going to purchase a couple. They got a really good deal to purchase them in bulk effectively. So they're going to go forward and just purchase all of them, replace some of the outside doors on some of the buildings. Uh, after that one, we had, oh, this was the interesting, it was the facade program. And so Minot Housing Authority uh, does a lot of work in town, obviously. And the Minot Housing Authority applied for the facade program for one of their buildings at 108 East Berdick. And so there was a lot, there was some discussion on should a like semi or quasi government agency be able to apply for?
This is hilarious.
The facade program.
As you can tell, I did not watch council last night. This is hilarious right here.
It was, it was.
How did the discussion work out on this?
So Blessam came out first. Uh, he, he, he was asking if it was, you know, legal that they could even apply for it kind of thing, like in century code state law. Uh, Janser and the city attorney both come back and say that Janser over his time thinks it should be fine. And the city attorney said, as she was sitting there without actually looking at it, she figured it was okay and it met the, you know, technical parameters, but there can obviously be some, you know, work, workaround on it there. Uh, Fuller Samuelson, both weren't for it. Samuelson, uh, very opposed to the facade program in general. Fuller same, kind of felt the same way as Blessam, like how can a government agency that's funded a lot through taxpayer dollars? Also try to get more taxpayer dollars to fund something else. Felt like.
But it's a government agency, right?
Yeah, the Minot Housing Authority.
Yeah.
They are considered a quasi government agency.
It's, it's not a nonprofit?
Not technically, I don't think, but I could be off on that, but it was really.
Almost seems like the one place where you should invest money.
Well, here's the thing.
But it's not technically a city property, so I'm wrong.
And the property technically falls within their zoning maps for the facade program. A lot of times they wouldn't necessarily think this is one of those buildings that they would allow for it, but because of how their funding sources come, most of those are restricted to what they can spend it on.
Oh, I see.
So they had to, to actually upgrade the outside of the building, they would either have to A, like fundraise it naturally. Or B, go to the facade program and try to get that to fund the renovation. And long story short, guess what happened?
Well, I know what happened.
Okay, I did tell you. Okay.
Ended in a three, three vote because we were missing one council person.
Alderman Hayes wasn't present, so we had a three, three vote come forward on that and just throwback to the summer. It was, it was a classic one, but I, I guess look forward for this one probably in two weeks.
I'm sure it'll be restricted a little bit and then come back.
Yep. Good chance when Alderman Hayes is there, it'll get brought back up and watch something come of that. Maybe not also. This could be one of those things where.
It's an interesting one.
It was, because it's not.
There's a lot of technicality there. How do you feel like it should go?
So generally facade program in general, not a huge fan of. But from what I can tell, I mean, it technically met the standards, I think. And it got this far in the application process that it got to council. So I don't know if I, outside of like principle, which that means a lot frankly, I, I don't know if I see a lot of like technical reason to take it away, but principally I'm not opposed to it.
Right, right.
So again, I'm giving you.
No, 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 that's a very fair answer because there is two deals. It's, are you voting no because now this is against the law, we shouldn't be doing this? Or are you voting no because hey, I just don't feel like we should be doing the facade program? Those are two different reasons.
Yep. And I, I think a lot of the three that voted against it were for largely at least principally because they don't, they're not fans of the facade program. They saw this as a great opportunity to kind of draw a line in the sand and say, hey, this isn't the kind of stuff that we necessarily want to be getting funded for this program.
For sure. Very interesting there.
Just brought up a really.
Three, we'll see if it comes back.
Yep. It was really, really interesting point of conversation for the facade program. I, I really think next year that you might see some more substantive changes come to it, but that's gut feeling purely speculative. Yep. Exactly. Especially with an election year coming up. It'll be interesting to see how that one plays out in full. But after that one, the next item, guess what else? We had more flood, flood diversion talk, flood control. There we go. The right word.
At the end says it'll never put the building on the tax rules. So they'll never give the taxpayers a return on this particular facade program. That's a great point.
That is.
If it's not on the tax rules, then how in the world can it work? You're just getting free money.
That's a very fair point because in theory for the facade program.
That's not all verified on our end, but that's all true. Then that's crazy. That's actually crazy then. And I definitely don't agree with it.
The theory in the facade program is you're able to get a tax break on your building or, you know, they help fund some of your renovations. Because it's going to eventually help, you know, beautify the building and make it look better to add more value to the property.
Right.
But if that property is not going to be sold for.
It's not going to be on the tax rules.
Exactly. Not even just sold, but like, yeah, not on the tax bracket or docket, then what's the point? But after that one, we had flood control. And this one kind of made some rounds last night after the meeting. I know.
We've got that conversation for another 20 years.
Pretty much.
Thankfully, we won't ever have to go out of business.
Flood control brought us uh, a new roundabout coming to town.
Yes, that's what we needed. I saw this.
This is what was all agreed upon.
Where's this one at? Where's the location at?
So it's the Maple, Maple diversion, which is on uh, what is it? Sixth, Sixth Street?
Yep.
Yep, right over by um, on the far side of the railroad tracks from the moose. Okay. But a little closer to, it's where that stop sign I think goes through. So you can, off of Berdick, so you can kind of cross over the bridge or the, not the bridge, the railroad tracks, that area.
Okay, to get into the Mrs. Parking lot?
Yeah, and or into that uh, neighborhood in the back there. But because of how they're going to redirect the river, they're not going to be able to build, they'd have to effectively build a bridge to get over. So now instead, what they think is going to do the best route for traffic in the long run, they're just building a roundabout there.
Gotcha.
Interesting thing. It's going to cost a little extra with roundabouts. I guess it's about 272,000 more. Uh, and because this is a change, the city has to pretty much pocket, cover this out of pocket. So Blessam, little, little, I think he used the word heartburn over the cost, but he's a big roundabout guy, I guess.
Yes, he's talked about this before.
And we've seen it come up. And so now this is here and he thinks this is a great opportunity. He drives that road a ton. So he wants to see a roundabout there and on the flip, spoiler alert, this passed six to nothing. We're going to get the roundabout. But some of the, some of the conversation that came up was um, Alderman Fuller lives by the lone current roundabout in town. And he has seen some, you know, things go on. I don't think there's been a technical accident reported yet. Maybe there's been one in the couple of years it's been there. But he's seen a lot of, for lack of a better term, tomfoolery going on there.
Those are two words.
Well, it's, it's a hyphenated word, right? Apparently you'll get people that go on there and do like the Griswold vacation where they just go in circle and they'll film it.
Who hasn't done that?
And you'll see.
Have you done that?
No, I haven't. I guess.
Ever?
I, that, no, I can't, no, I never have. But I was going to say, that's like the only roundabout I've been on, but I've been on a few more. Carrington has one. There's one out west by like Sydney, Montana. But and Billings.
You haven't lived life yet.
I know. Billings has, Billings has a bunch, which they also mentioned that because Billings, if you've been through Billings, they have a ton of roundabouts and they get a little old, a little quick. My whole thought with it, successive.
So like stoplights don't get old?
I mean, yes, but the roundabouts I don't love in that same light.
Busy stop signs don't get old?
Yes. I'll take roundabouts over stops, over four-way stops. Don't love roundabouts over stoplights.
Oh, you have a friend today. Theater in stream says tomfoolery is one word. It's a good word.
I think it's very fitting for the situation.
Yes. Where a roundabout needs to be installed.
Yep.
Where I'd be fan of, I think I'd be fan of a roundabout. This is a busy road, so people will not agree with me on this. It's over by, coming out of the mall by Gate City Bank.
Oh, where there used to be that stoplight.
And now it's just a terrible intersection?
You're actually not wrong. That could, that could work, something like that.
Stop by the roundabout this weekend because uh, Jeff Hyder will be there recording TikToks at the roundabout this weekend.
Shout out Jeff. And well, if you're going to do it, we'll be there with you. Swear. But no, that's great. I could totally see a roundabout going there by the mall.
Yeah, I, because that, when it's busy, it's almost impossible to get out.
Especially if you, yeah, if you're trying to turn left off of that onto what, 30, 30 seconds?
It's fine.
Yeah. Or vice versa, if you're coming towards the mall from that, that road that takes you pretty much to Walmart.
Right, you can't get across.
Not a great intersection there.
Not good at all. That'd be a good place for a roundabout.
I used to, I used to live in that area and the stoplight, I, I wasn't bad.
Yeah, but they didn't put it back because of cost, right?
Yes, it cost too much and it wasn't, you know, I think.
Yeah, utilized enough, but as busy it is.
Exactly. And that road is always interesting too with.
And it slows people down because people kind of uh, pull on that road.
Yep, love to haul on that road.
So having a roundabout there would slow people down a little bit.
Yep, undoubtedly there. I think I like that Jonathan. There you go. Hey, if you guys are listening today, Jonathan's got an idea for you. But no.
It's only 250K.
Yeah, a little buff, right? No, I, I love it. I think this is, you want to go to commercial or you want to keep going with city council here?
We can go to a break. We'll be back in about 15.
In the demanding world of oil and gas, precision, safety and efficiency are non-negotiable. Unmanned operator drone services revolutionizes how you monitor, inspect and manage your operations. With cutting-edge technology and expert operators, we deliver real-time data, detailed reports and actionable insights for our valuable clients. Why risk the safety of your team or waste precious time? Our drones access even the most challenging areas with ease, reducing downtime and enhancing safety across your sites. We take the guesswork out of your projects by offering LiDAR mapping and inspection services so that your projects stay safe, on budget and on time. Unmanned operator drone services, where technology meets safety, precision and efficiency. Contact us today to elevate your operations. Yes, pun intended.
Enjoy Minot's finest authentic Mexican cuisine with a view at mi Mexico. The rooftop patio is open and ready for you to enjoy a margarita or other cool.
Hi.
Hi, we're back.
We're back. I'm ready.
You're ready? How are you?
I'm great Jonathan. How you doing on this Monday morning?
We're going to just start over.
Yeah. It's nine o'clock. It's Minot Talk.
First 30 minutes never even happened. Okay.
No, continuing on with city council, a couple of little notes to wrap up from last night. Animal pound services agreement came back forward. Um, pretty little of a weird situation how that worked out. Apparently the request, the bid request process wasn't, you know, highlighted as notably as it could have been, but sounds like they're going to accept the proposal and now start negotiations again for next year.
Gotcha. Something else. Uh, updated, Jeff mentions the updated building code to match the new state building code should be a good thing as well.
He did. I was just going to get to that one.
We'll get to it.
That one came up. Blessam asked if it was a good time to start aligning with state codes and if additional, you know, local layers could start to be pulled back a little bit for developers. Especially they noted after the flood, when a lot of new contractors and people came up here to start rebuilding things, some extra things got put in place just to try to cover all of our bases at that point. And you know, now maybe a few of those things can start to go away.
Hey, so that's literal red tape being repealed.
Yes.
That would be the definition, right?
In theory, yeah, that would be literally taking red tape away at that point. So really look forward to see. Yep. Can't wait to, hopefully that brings some really cool features forward for the developers in town.
At least more accessibility, a little more ease.
Yep.
Especially during a time where it should get a little busy.
Exactly.
As we have an influx of people, as we've talked about often.
Over the next five plus years starting to come into town here, it's going to be great.
It's going to be great. That's what I'd say.
And there was a couple of other little ones that kind of came forward, but one other notable one that. And there was a couple other little ones that kind of came forward, but one other notable one that I thought was interesting, just because it brought forward a little bit of conversation. So it was a sale of city property, which if anything over a hundred dollars has to be brought before city council if it's going to be sold.
True.
So long story short, there was an employee that worked at the city, uh, not very, a shorter person. So they bought a special office chair for them. Apparently it cost thirteen hundred dollars a few years back. A person has since left the city of Minot from, you know, they don't work there anymore. Excuse me. And now they sent a, you know, letter to the city asking, hey, if no one's using that chair, I would be willing to buy it for five hundred dollars. And I guess general depreciation value says the chair should be worth nine hundred something if you go by whatever standard they use. So conversation came up like, hey, why can't we just keep the thing? Like, can we just store it till someone else, you know, needs it? And because David Lakefield came up for this, the legend himself, uh, you know, pretty much said anything's on the table, whatever you guys really want to do with it. It's up to you. Yes. Bless them asked pretty much if there's a more sound way to go about it. And that's when the city attorney kind of speaks up and she says, well, technically the way it's being done is fine. There's nothing wrong with it. It meets all the standards. But generally this, when these things come up, they send them to auction. Especially if it happens in like the attorney's office or anything they're interested in, they would recommend normally to send it to auction. So the city, what's the city do? They end up.
Sending it to auction?
Yes, they, they declined the offer of five hundred dollars and then.
They're gonna not make five hundred bucks.
Accepted the offer to send it to auction where, you know, like you said, now that person can possibly get it for cheaper.
Interesting.
Or the flip side, they could end up going seven, eight hundred bucks.
Very unique item. It's a very unique item.
Yep. That's, that's kind of the thing with it. And I assume that's why they took it because it's probably been sitting unused for a minute at this point. So they figured, hey, we'll take the five hundred and call it a day, but I totally understand why they want to send it to auction.
I think when it sells, we need to write an article on that one.
Yeah.
And cost saving measures, city sells chair for six hundred bucks.
Or city, city loses money on share. But no, one.
Budget deficit. This is money on church.
One, one good point that was made on that subject though, was, uh, could this look like we're doing like favors or backhand deals kind of thing to which.
And that's a point.
It's not, but yeah, that's, you can get the idea that if, not with this specifically, but generally speaking, bigger picture. This is one of the, you could make an argument that if this is something that persists, it could be argued as like, uh, you know, favorites kind of thing or something along those lines.
If you were consistently buying chairs and employees were uh, changed chairs to whatever object and employees were quitting and then they're asking to buy it like, yeah.
Different ballgame then.
Right. It's like going to Best Buy, buying it and bringing it back and then trying to buy the open box.
Yes.
Clearly you're just gaming the system. Right. Just stop. But yeah, it seems pretty one of a kind.
Yep.
Interesting. Well, you have something to bid on there Kyler.
Yeah, hey. Next auction comes up to, for, for some city items and like the police auction and stuff, it'll be, uh, I assume that's the one it'll be at.
Yeah.
I guess I don't know for a fact.
I hope there's a special auction.
Just, just for the chair. What if the city just puts it on eBay?
Technically that'd be an auction.
Yeah, exactly.
Could be an auction. Yeah, that'd be awesome. Well, they would probably be most successful in getting the highest dollar for it to put on eBay.
And you have to pay shipping. Imagine how much it would cost to ship an office chair that's assembled. It'd be, it's completely pointless and.
Nah, they can just fly me out.
It's worth, worth the few hundred extra bucks that they'll charge you for shipping at that point.
Obviously they'd literally just send me.
You got, yeah, Jonathan will do the run. If you do start utilizing eBay as an auction site, ready man delivery man.
I'll deliver that chair.
It's perfect. We got it set up?
I'll, it'll be like pay for my gas.
Yeah. I'll like the old.
I'll do it at cost.
There you go. Just time served.
Yeah, that, that, that will go on my resume. Deliver chair for city to like New York, you know, just some random place.
Way out there kind of like go to.
No, it'll probably be like Maine.
Yeah. Yes. You know, you'll go to Minot, Maine. It's perfect. Right? Is it Maine or Massachusetts? There's a.
I don't know. It's not that important right now. Epic. You'll, you'll, you'll use the old Google and you'll figure it out.
Dark, right?
All right. Well, that's pretty interesting. There was something that very tragic that happened.
Yeah, unfortunately, uh, North Dakota legend, Gordy Lindquist, oh crazy fingers himself. Tragically passed away this weekend. He was eighty-eight, so not a spring chicken by any stretch of the imagination, but Gordy, legendary piano player here in the state of North Dakota and unfortunately was involved in a car accident.
I done playing at the Dickens Festival, one of the events things there. I'm not, not sure if it's the one like a main stage event or what, but he was at the Dickens Festival and was playing there and then headed home.
And unfortunately that intersection leaving the road to Garrison onto highway eighty-three.
If you remember on Saturday, it was very foggy and a little bit snowy. So, um, I'm not sure when he. It was middle of the day. I don't remember exactly.
It was like four, five, six somewhere in that timeframe. Uh, and yeah, unfortunately.
Very sad.
Yep. Bad situation, but Gordy, longtime, uh, teacher at Dakota College of Botno, taught music up there for decades. He would go down to Arizona a lot of the times during the winters and spend his winters down there, but guess what? He would still entertain and play down in Arizona too. So he was very well known, not just in the state of North Dakota, but across a couple of states.
It's Arizona is kind of like North Dakota.
Two point O, right? Yeah.
The warm version of North Dakota.
Exactly. I think a lot of, I have a side thing on that later. Remind me.
Yikes. You always have side things.
I know. I take a lot of sidebars, but no, uh, Gordy, he was a member of the North Dakota Musicians Association Hall of Fame. Uh, for the last, since I think twenty eighteen, nineteen, something like that. Legendary performer, one of the nicest guys you'll ever meet. Uh, Gordy was my, if I can get this right, step great uncle. So when my grandmother remarried after my grandfather died, she married his, his brother.
As a side note, if you're watching this episode today, you are also related to Kyler.
There's like five percent chance. But, uh, so I can't say I knew Gordy well by any stretch, but from the times I didn't get to chance to meet Gordy, one of the nicest guys you'll ever meet.
Yeah.
And a phenomenal, phenomenal performer and pianist. Guy would go upside down, play the piano like backwards. It was ridiculous. Even at his age, like he's still performing, obviously. He was just at the Dickens Festival. He was at the Host Fest a couple of months ago.
Yeah.
Like he, he will put on a fantastic show. He was one of the fastest pianists you could ever see. So very unfortunate, North Dakota lost a real legend in that one.
I can play a C chord.
Can you?
Yeah, I can too. I play, uh, C flat as well. Well, I, I can sing any key in flat.
Heck yeah. You darn right there.
And I won't even know which key I'm singing. It's really no talent.
Yes, you are, you are a phenomenal musician. Should we start band? Is that gonna be our next project?
Yeah, let's go do that.
You play an instrument?
I can play the C chord. On the piano.
Okay. I played the clarinet in like middle school. I can play a couple chords on piano. So we got something going here. We need someone to play the drums. We're set.
Oh, I can play the drums.
Oh, you got the drums?
Yeah, I can keep beat.
There you go.
As long as the piano follows me.
Yes, that's, well, you're the drums. You, you lead it all, right?
Exactly.
But that's, uh, that's the extent of.
I can't keep a beat.
I, I can. I'll, I'll be the drummer.
Well, I can keep a beat. It's just not consistent.
Yeah, actually keeping the time.
Yeah, I can't keep time. Yeah, otherwise I, I can go one E and a, two E and a, three E and a.
That's easy. It's just getting, uh, getting it all wrapped together. See Jonathan's got it. Guys, we're gonna start a band. It'll be the decoding band. It's gonna be great. I'll sing and play the clarinet.
And I'll play the piano drums.
Yeah, it's golden. Get one other person involved. It'd be fantastic.
No, it will not be, but.
So my other note there.
Yeah.
How come? And maybe this is just a subjective feeling that I get from this. More people from North Dakota, when they get to that retirement phase, move to somewhere like Arizona rather than in Florida. That's what.
I think it's a legion.
Is, that's a fair point. Actually, I mean, for travel wise, it makes sense, but.
How far is it? Is it that much further?
I, I don't know how much further. I, I assume Arizona is a little closer.
Probably not because it's further away than you think.
I believe it is, but I, I would, so that's my thought.
I, I think, I think Arizona, this is my thought. I think Arizona is actually set up more for like a relaxed and.
And fire kind of thing.
And then Florida, that would be my thought. Florida is not a relaxed environment, but.
Lot more fast paced. Yeah.
That would be my guess.
My other thing that I just thought of here, the housing crash from fifteen years ago. Arizona got hit immensely hard by that. So all of a sudden, tons of real estate for was fairly nice properties for under market value.
Yeah. What's crazy is like the, the banks, the North Dakota banks. So like first international, Arizona's like, they cover that place. The, uh, even first Western a little bit.
And what's that, uh, is it border electric?
Okay.
Is that?
Border states.
Border states. Yeah, they have, they, they operate in Arizona too.
Gotcha. Yeah, it's like one hour difference to go to Phoenix versus going to Tallahassee, which is northern Florida.
Yeah, you're in the panhandle there, but still it's, it's, it's pretty much the same, maybe technically a little, yeah. A little bit closer to Arizona, but also fun random fact that I got from my days working in the, um, air, the rental car industry.
Dude, what's crazy is actually it's one day, ten hours to get to Miami.
Yikes. Versus how long was it to Tallahassee?
Let me confirm.
Also, while he's looking that up, my, uh, I was gonna make a point. It's irrelevant at this stage.
One day, three hours. My bad. So seven hours from Tallahassee to Miami.
Wow.
And we have a bad in North Dakota.
That has to, that has to account for traffic at least a little bit there, right?
Yeah, but the, you had to go up and then probably west because of the panhandle.
Also on top of that all too, Florida's probably just larger than. I, I think it is. Yeah, it's actually a massive state.
It's not that it's mass and land sizes. It's the way that it's shaped.
Yeah, it's, there's so, and so much of the routes are on like the coastlines and stuff. So you have to like loop around and stuff. Yeah. Anyways.
Yeah, you're right Lori. A Legion flies to Florida too.
That's true. Out of, yeah, Orlando stuff. Yeah. It's not out of Minot, but yeah.
I don't know why Arizona became the hotbed.
And maybe it's not.
I think you're closer, right? Because of the, um.
The housing thing. And cheaper housing options in the last, and again, maybe this has had, it's been only something in the last like fifteen years where the Arizona things really popped up.
Florida's retirement.
It is. Completely is. I was watching the Grizzly Man documentary last night and it just made me laugh how that, you know, twenty-five years ago, these, this old couple from New York that used to work like construction, moved to Florida as their retirement thing. And it, it just shows that this has been something that's consistently been going on for a long time.
Hurricanes in Arizona.
That's true. That's a fact. There's probably something bad there though, right?
Heat.
Yeah, very hot, very hot. You don't get the humidity that in Arizona like Florida though. Florida's humid as all get up.
Eighties in Florida right now.
Oh gosh, that sounds amazing. I could go for that right about now. Phoenix, oh gosh. Okay, Phoenix. Sounds terrible. It's desert. It's still warming up. They're an hour behind us. It's still kind of dark there. But Jonathan, you have anything else? You want to talk about the depressing Vikings and?
No, okay. I don't want to talk about the Vikings. I want to talk about the Bears.
The Bears.
How? How are they? But how many wins do they have?
I think they got, they're like first in the NFC right now.
They are. They're beating, they're ahead of the Packers.
Yep.
They're nine and three, I think. And the Packers are eight, three and one.
Okay, yep.
Something like that.
That sounds right.
How in the world are the Bears that good that fast?
I guess Ben Johnson.
And the Lions are trash.
Yeah, they're mid.
Yeah, Ben Johnson.
Ben Johnson, common denominator here.
Yeah.
Apparently Caleb Williams is legit. Well, he's more so than he was last year.
Who's more legit, Caleb Williams or Drake May?
Drake May?
I like me some Drake May.
I'd take Jaden Daniels over either of them.
Yeah, I mean, he's one of those quarterbacks that are really great when they play.
Well, he's a, he's like one bad injury is a dislocated elbow so far.
Yeah, no biggie.
It was just non-throwing on, so it's fine.
Dislocations are so nasty.
Oh, it's disgusting.
Um, no, uh, Jaden Daniels is gonna be, get more injured over time.
There's a good chance. Yeah.
He's not Lamar Jackson and like the body size and stuff like that, but they're both athletic. That's why we make the comparison is they both move a lot. But Lamar Jackson is, he's, he's kind of built.
Plus Jaden Daniels plays for Washington and that field is like notoriously.
That field is taken down some quarterbacks.
Injury prone.
Well, Alex Smith was good after he left, right? Was it? Or did he go there?
He went there.
Yeah, he went there and then got his knee torn up. Like, like his football career died. Yes.
Yeah, and took like two years to come back so he could play like a couple snaps. And if you have ever seen his.
And Jeff Isman.
Yeah, post-surgery injury on his leg. It is one of the most disgusting.
It's like tiger-esque.
Yes.
It's just where sleeves, like sleeves all.
Exactly. Don't know. It's fine, right? But yeah, that's.
Caleb Williams is it?
That's a tough one.
No, it's not Caleb Williams. The unseen part of that is they also drafted a great wide receiver. Name Rome Adunze.
And where'd he go to college?
I think it was like Washington.
Of course. He was a Husky.
He was a Husky.
So how come, answer me this. You like the Mariners.
Yeah.
You like the Huskies.
Yeah.
But you don't like the Seahawks?
I don't mind them.
But you like the Packers.
So that was the only sport that I was willing to change teams, if you would, when I moved out here, but I liked the Packers growing up.
Like Brett Favre back in the day?
Yeah, but I was a Seahawks fan first.
You should have stuck with Seahawks.
No, I did. Okay. I did through the, uh.
Through the Super Bowl. Stay on that wagon.
I still root for the Seahawks.
So you have a fun on Sunday.
If it was, yeah, if it was Seahawks versus Packers at this point, I'd probably go Packers.
That was a, that was like an NFC championship game like ten years ago. Yeah.
When, uh, Hasselback with Matt Hasselback and, and they, they did not overcome.
We're gonna get the ball. We're gonna score. Pick six on the first play.
That did not happen.
That was like twenty years ago.
Score did happen.
Yeah. 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 I think it was Al Harris picked it off.
Part of the problem is that you go and have Matt Hasselback as your quarterback. That is, he was good.
He was solid.
Steven Alexander was the man.
Oh, the running back? Yeah. Dude was a legend.
That dude was a legend.
Won MVP.
They should have won the Super Bowl.
Probably.
With that team.
Big Ben Roethlisberger had something to say.
That it was not about Big Ben at that point. He was on the team, but it's about drum betters because they wanted to get a Super Bowl for the bus. And the rest wanted that to happen too. The rest may have wanted that to happen.
You, you know, a fun story from that?
There's a.
Whole conspiracy there.
There's, there's some calls that, that were like straight up not right.
Yeah, the touch, Ben, I, I specifically remember Ben Roethlisberger's like QB sneak touchdown. That was very much questionable if it was actually a touchdown or not.
There was also the, a pass to, um, I want to say Dwayne Jackson that he was in bounds, but it was within the last two minutes and he couldn't review. And they don't have his aggressive booth reviews back then.
Yep, that's.
And so it never, it never made it up to the booth. And it was like in the last two minutes of the first half or whatever.
So the coach can't challenge.
Yeah, they would have set it up and, but yeah.
That's, but then, you know, fast forward ten years from that, you gotta see him win a Super Bowl with Russell Wilson.
Yeah, also gotta see danger.
Dangerous.
Dangerous, uh, throw a pick.
Well, they should have just ran the ball.
Perhaps, perhaps. And that's probably, probably not on Russ.
No, I don't think so.
That's probably on the coach there.
I think it's on Russ that he's still playing right now, though. It's time for him to call it a day.
Yeah, he is. Recently I had a birthday and so he goes and he tweets out, like, so there's a happy birthday post and he retweets it and it's like, yeah, you know, there's still more to come. It's like, okay. CFL maybe.
It's like him and Aaron Rodgers. It's like you guys were
Yeah, but Aaron Rodgers is still good. He's better than Russ.
Yes, I will say that for sure, but is he?
He was good for the first half of the season and then the season is catching up with him. But the first half of the season, he was, he was actually like
But what's happening now?
Right, he's hurt.
Yeah, I, I think it's about time he calls it a day too.
Probably not wrong, but the way that these quarterbacks work is they go and they go and like prop them up.
Yeah.
Cause they can throw the ball.
Yeah, just pump them full of, of painkillers and get them out there.
Same way.
Darn right.
Brett Favre as a Vikings fan liked it. He was good. He was good until the like last though of the season against the Saints.
Yeah, very much a Vikings thing. So speaking of that, you know what, how it's gonna, what's gonna happen next? So J.J. McCarthy probably bust.
I mean, we knew that when he was drafted. Have you looked at his stash from college?
Yeah, atrocious.
They ran the ball.
Yeah, he threw like, he averaged like eighteen pass attempts a game.
So then they're making fun of, I love how they're making fun of him on social media right now because it was against the Huskies. When J.J. McCarthy goes wins the national championship on the team and he goes and he signs the camera lens.
And he was like six of eight or something. It was ridiculous. Yeah, hey, that's nine. That's our guy. Tell you what. Hey, I thought, I, I was, I wasn't high on him from the start.
You know what? You know a quarterback that I kinda like right now?
Who's that?
Sam Darnold.
Yeah.
He's not bad.
Here's my thing.
He's kinda good.
He is.
I think he beat the Vikings.
He did just a couple days ago. You're right. And I think he was a Viking too.
What was he?
You betcha he was. So here's the kicker with that. Should the Vikings have kept Sam Darnold? Yeah. However, in the moment, you have a rookie quarter or effectively a rookie quarterback that you drafted top ten a year prior that has not played a game. You have to go with that.
No, you don't. That's where, that's where every other team in the NFL, like literally almost every other team in the NFL gets it wrong. And the Packers get it right.
Yeah.
They go draft quarterbacks in the first round and they make them sit four years. And then they go play and they're good.
It's true. It's worked. Apparently that's what J.J. McCarthy needs because he's nowhere near ready.
Yeah, well, you think Jordan Love would have been ready? He came out of Nevada.
It's true. I think he would have been ready a year earlier, maybe not.
Maybe, but that's not the point.
Yeah, that's fair.
Not the point at all. And you don't even know what injuries that they deal with.
Yeah.
See, that, that's the thing. It used to be in college football that you retrod it a year. Why? Because you could get big enough to play in college football.
Exactly.
And that's part of the same adjustment you have to make going from, you're going playing against a thirty year, you wanna go run against Myles Garrett? You see that guy coming at you?
And with that, saying on that same note, J.J. McCarthy is the youngest starting quarterback in the NFL.
Dude, you guys, you guys just do it wrong over there.
Of course, it's the Vikings. So on my point then, you know who, what's gonna happen next year? Vikings are gonna sign Jameis Winston to compete with J.J. McCarthy. They're gonna give J.J. the job out of training camp and he's gonna still suck. And though like week three, four, they're gonna give, throw Jameis in there and watch him throw like thirty touchdown passes and like five picks.
Only five.
Vikings make it to the NFC championship game.
Put in J.J. McCarthy.
No, then Jameis Winston throws like four or five picks in the championship game. That's what's gonna happen.
Cause Jamison is good for a few picks.
Yeah, hundred percent. Thirty, thirty.
Dude, that guy, that guy, if there was one dude in the NFL that should start a podcast, it's probably him.
Yeah, that'd be entertaining.
That would actually be entertaining.
Yeah, he, he is a much
And don't even talk about football. I don't even care about football.
He's a much more natural entertainer than a lot of the other guys.
I don't, I don't even know if he tries.
No, that's the thing. That's what I'm saying. Like, I think it's just who he is. He is just a funny and like entertaining dude. But that's Jameis Winston. That's, that's, that's the football life. Basketball is a thing too.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm not done.
Oh, you got more football takes?
Yeah.
What else?
Like who's other backup quarterbacks that have been thrust into starting roles over there in Minnesota besides this year?
The, oh gosh, we can go back a lot. So twenty seventeen, very notable one.
Did Mac Jones ever stuck to a split? Mac, am I saying his name wrong?
Mac Jones?
Yeah.
He's quarterback for San Francisco.
Yeah, yeah. Did he ever take a pit stop in Minnesota?
Nope, he did not. Uh, but so even, I, I think twenty seventeen, one of the most notable ones. Case Keenum coming out of nowhere, leading the Vikings to the championship game and sucking. Go back further, you have Brett Favre who comes in as a mercenary free agent at the age of forty in two thousand nine.
We're going way back.
Argue, well, this is the Viking, this is how the Vikings work. So then after the interim between that, so after Brett Favre sucks in twenty ten, the Vikings collapse, twenty eleven rolls around, the Vikings draft a rookie quarterback by the name of Christian Ponder and also signed Donovan McNabb. McNabb's washed and Ponder sucks. Fast forward a few more years after they
It's a classic move.
Yes, after they figure that out, draft Teddy Bridgewater. Guess what? Teddy Bridgewater's knees in like eight pieces.
But then he was actually kinda decent.
He was in twenty fifteen. He was looking very good. Then twenty sixteen rolls around, his knee falls apart in training camp. They go trade for Sam Bradford.
Who, that's not a move.
Sam Bradford had arguably the best year of his career in Minnesota.
You fast forward playoffs probably.
And make, Vikings had one of the most, Vikings started out five and O that year, ended up eight and eight, missed the playoffs. Classic Vikings collapse. Then twenty seventeen rolls around, Sam Darnold starts opening week twenty seventeen, best game of his career. Gets hurt, misses the rest of the year effectively. Case Keenum comes up, steps up, turns into the, you know, guy until the championship game against the Eagles.
Yeah, it's a story.
And after that, you get Kirk Cousins comes in, supposed to be the guy to bring him to the championship.
Yeah, never did, but he's good. And, and so you guys get rid of him.
And he was clearly not, he's clearly not.
He's good at the tacos for a while or a couple games.
He's had like a game or two.
Yeah.
I think he is also, I think that injury unfortunately took out all Kirk O'Chains.
And then you guys drafted Kirk Cousins?
No, no, no. They signed him.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, he was with Washington for the first few years there.
Okay, so and then in recent years that you had, you, did you, you had another stint with Sam Darnold though?
Last year, yeah. Viking signed him to be the, you know.
Who was it before? Who was quarterback before last year?
Uh, Kirk Cousins, but twenty twenty-three is the year that Kirk Cousins got hurt. So that was like
And who filled in?
Oh, they had Josh Dobbs, Nick Mullins, Jaren Hall.
That was the year that Josh
astronaut, yeah.
Yeah, but that was the year that Josh Dobbs came, got signed that same week and supposedly O'Connell was speaking the plays, how it worked.
Yeah, was talking to him, tell the like buzzer sounded in the headset.
Incredible. That was an incredible story.
They traded for him that week. Uh, the guy they start that game, Jaren Hall, ends up getting hurt in the first quarter. Then Dobbs comes in and ends up lighting it up, does great the next week and then starts coming back to
You have to be really good because that's the thing, you, you can have a week in the NFL and be good, but then they figure you out.
That's the thing.
These different, these coordinators actually paid big money. Not actually that big money, but they're paid good money.
It is, it is big money, subjectively.
Big money to us, but not big money to the people that are there.
Players even, yeah.
It's such a weird
Yeah, that's a weird concept there.
Um, but guess who may be starting this Sunday?
Who?
Trey Lance.
Hey, NDSU, legend himself.
Legend himself.
That's a guy who needed more time to
Exactly, just like J.J. McCarthy.
I don't know. I think J.G. might just be a cornball that busts out.
So I heard you on this, but I really go with the idea that like they didn't start, they didn't do this to quarterbacks until recently.
Yeah.
Like the last ten years where you would draft and expect to start day one.
Yeah.
That did not happen till recently.
On top of that, draft and expect them to start day one and also be like halfway good.
Right.
Like, cause you go back twenty plus years to Peyton Manning's rookie year, terrible rookie season. Through like twice as many picks as touchdowns. But they knew, they knew what they had in them and they knew the talent was there and so they gave it time. I mean, obviously that's not a great comparison of J.J. McCarthy. You know, Manning's got five inches and fifty pounds on McCarthy.
And J.J. McCarthy always just had a running back.
Yeah.
Maybe you guys should get a running back.
Well, here's the other thing. Kevin O'Connell doesn't know how to run the ball, so.
A situation. How do you back, how do you draft a guy out of Michigan, period?
Well, here's the other
They thought he was Tom Brady, I mean.
I guess.
They did.
So Kevin O'Connell is, got famous for saying a quote that NFL organizations fail young quarterbacks more than young quarterbacks fail NFL organizations. And what are the Vikings doing?
The Vikings story that went.
Fail in the young quarterback.
Whenever I hear Jameis Winston, I think about his crab legs. Agreed.
I love the crab legs.
Felt bad. Thought he was terrible at the time, but now it's hilarious.
It's exactly, in hindsight, it's hilarious. Also, Jameis Winston, if you really wanted, could have been a pitcher in the MLB.
Well, like half of quarterbacks could have been.
Yeah, through, he was a great closer for Florida State. Guy was a legend on the mound, but that was college.
No.
He's, he's had a great NFL career.
Bears gonna win the Super Bowl?
No.
Dude, could you imagine?
I'd cry a little bit.
If you were Ben Johnson, would you just retire?
Oh, he's gonna do it for like twenty years?
No, you can't sustain that in Chicago.
No, not at all. Historically speaking, it is not sustainable.
If you win the Super Bowl, he should retire. If he wins the Super Bowl, he should retire.
Call it a day. Go back to college.
That'd be so cool if, if a coach did that.
Yeah, like, you know, someone that could have done that, Sean McVay.
He almost did.
That's what it's exactly, like, cause that next
Exactly, but
Like the year following, they were, they had a down year and he's like, I don't want to do it anymore.
After you win the Super Bowl, then like you have a losing season, it's like, yeah, I'm out.
The point?
I've, I've been on the peak. I don't want to get, it's gonna take too much work to go back.
But they've retooled and they're the Rams.
So we'll, we'll end here on this last topic. But did Lane Kiffin handle his exit wrong?
Yeah, of course.
All right, so explain to me how it was handled wrong.
Technically speaking?
No, 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 no. I, I want to understand the optics. I don't understand the optics, honestly. Tells you what kind of person I am.
From what I gather, uh, he pretty, which, so there's been talk for the last month or so that he's gonna leave Ole Miss and
And some of that's hard because that's not necessarily, that happens with a lot of coaches and it's not necessarily the coach's fault.
No.
And it's towards, it happens every year.
Yeah.
The Washington Husky coach, whether you like him or not, which is up for debate, um, had dealt with the same deal. They were saying, oh, Florida, and he's like, dude, stop linking me to this job because you're hurting recruiting.
Yep, you're hurting the, everything right now that we're doing.
And so it's like, whether they want it or not, they get this, right?
So from what I gathered with the Lane Kiffin story is he pretty much just sent his team like a letter and then immediately started to poach like the coaching staff. Feels a little distasteful.
He did what?
Sent the, rather than addressing the team in person, uh, sent them like a text or a letter.
I thought he was asked to not address the team in person.
That, like, I think, actually, did the, like, athletic director ask him to?
Asked him not to. Okay.
Told him he couldn't. I know he tried to like continue to coach the rest of the season.
He tried and the, and the AD said no. That's what, this, and they're saying he's the problem on this, but and I, I understand that there is past history with Kiffin, okay? And I'm sure he handled something incorrectly, but he gets like John, is it John, whatever, Sumral from Tulane?
Sure.
He's the new Florida coach.
Sure.
They've introduced him there. He's still gonna finish out the season coaching Tulane.
Yeah. I guess, is it just because what Ole Miss and LSU are rivals? Is that why Ole Miss isn't gonna let him do it?
That's probably part of the problem. So, but, but they're saying that Kiffin's a terrible guy because he's leading his team as they go into the college football playoff.
He's not, yeah, I don't think he's at fault for that specifically. The only thing I can say is maybe you wait a little bit longer to take the job, but
He was told by Ole Miss, he was given a deadline.
I did see that, yeah. Like Saturday, I think was the deadline, right?
Yeah, it was after that game. Like he needed to get it figured out right after the game.
Yeah.
So, so he's given all this stuff by Ole Miss, but yet now he is the guy that they're saying handled it all incorrectly. And I think that's just interesting.
The one other thing with college football too, cause these guys sign massive contracts to the coaches there now. And how, how is it that when they sign this contract, when they have like three years left, they're able to pretty much just go sign?
The new team pays their buyout.
Buys it out, but it just feels off how that works. Maybe I'm over
And they can get fired every, any moment.
Yes.
With, with a huge buyout. It's just how the contracts work.
Yeah, it, it just must be easy termination options.
Do you buy the idea that he doesn't, he didn't, he claims he doesn't know what his new contract is?
No, I don't buy that.
You know, I almost do and that's only, 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 not because I'm giving Kiffin props. Cause it's, I struggle to buy that, but his agent is Jimmy Sexton, which is like the notoriously like just a brutal agent in college football.
And I, I say all of this as I'm an LSU fan and I like that Lane Kiffin signed there, so.
Oh yeah, that's right. So you're excited about this.
Go Tigers.
And, and, okay, that's interesting because you guys went and paid, are gonna pay Brian Kelly his full buyout.
I guess.
And that's if he signs somewhere else, which if Ed Orgeron is any case, he probably won't, probably go coach high school football somewhere.
Yeah.
Okay, Brian Kelly, actually, I think will go back in.
He'll go, yeah, he'll go coach somewhere else. Maybe not this year, but
You guys, I think your guys' last payment to Ed is this year.
Yep.
And then you're gonna have Brian
For another like four.
Okay. And then your governor said, you know what? We are not going to be doing any more of these bad contracts. And then you guys went and made Kiffin like one of the highest paid coaches, like thirteen million dollars a year. And you guys are gonna pay Kiffin if Ole Miss wins the national championship. You guys are gonna pay Kiffin. The bonuses that he would have received.
Wild.
That's wild. If he makes it to the playoffs, like with Ole Miss, he's gonna get like two hundred fifty thousand dollars for making it to the playoffs in the first round. With LSU, he's gonna get paid seven hundred fifty thousand. And if he wins the national championship, he gets three million versus one million with Ole Miss.
So they just upped all the numbers.
By three.
Yeah, yeah, just tripled everything.
And then, um, what's the other? Well, I'm sure the, I don't know what the buyout number, but if someone else hires him away, it's only like six or seven million.
That's, that's wild.
But his buyout, no, his buyout is eighty percent of the remaining of his contract.
Okay, that's
That's huge.
That's, yeah. Interesting thing with Lane Kiffin. I, so first off, I didn't like the Brian Kelly hire. I liked to coach, I liked to
Ed, I don't know why you ever got rid of him. He was
There's some, there's some questionable recruiting things that were coming, kind of bubbling up there that, uh, he just retired and he's done and they called it a day there.
Yeah, that's why he never even tried to get back in maybe.
Yep, I think that's completely it. I think it's one of those, like, if you go, we're just gonna kind of let this slide since like half these guys are gone at this point.
Yeah.
But if you try to come back, we're probably gonna have to make a deal about this.
Right.
But the Lane Kiffin thing, it's just, I don't, I struggle to think that Lane Kiffin might be like the next great thing. He's been around, like, he's still young. He's like, I don't even think he's fifty. But the guy has been a coach at so many places over twenty years. Maybe that's a benefit to him. And this is finally the pinnacle, but he's coached at USC.
Yeah, but he got fired there on the tarmac.
He got fired at, when he was the coach of the Oakland Raiders.
Wow.
I just, I
That's not fair.
I guess probably not.
Because how many college football coaches succeed in NFL? It's rare.
Yeah, or if they do.
As the notorious one is Nick Saban did it.
Or if they do, it's normally not after they've had a lot of college success.
Jim Harbaugh might be the only one and he's still struggling. Um, but he, he also had a more of a running ball mentality.
Johnson back in the nineties, yeah.
Um, who was another big hire? There was John Sumral, there was, um, Lane Kiffin and there was another big, oh, Chesney from, from JMU.
Oh, sure. Yep, yep, yep. I did see that. Where did he sign with?
Uh, LSU.
Yeah, that's right. He pulled him, yeah. They did pull him over there. They got a whole, Kiffin got like a star-studded coaching staff. I did see that.
Kiffin himself?
Like, well, I don't know how much of a hand
He went to UCLA.
Oh, UCLA.
Chesney, Chesney's going to UCLA, but, but Kiffin did get
Him.
So again, Chesney is expected to finish the season with JMU.
So it's just Ole Miss being petty.
It's Ole Miss. That's the thing. Is that part of it? I believe it's Ole Miss. He's, he's always going to take his coaching staff with him.
Yeah.
Like that's part of the, that's what these coaches do. They're, they, they now come as a unit, install their system and move on.
Coaching is such a relationship thing.
It is, it is. So they, they almost secured the DC as the new head coach. They went, they did a fast move there. That's great, but yeah. Um, and then you got, um, the part of the problem is the Tulane and, and JMU are two small schools.
Yeah.
And the recruiting are not, like Tulane knows that maybe Sumral's gonna take some of the recruits with them, but he's not gonna naturally be pursuing all the three stars that were gonna go to Tulane anyways.
And it's, you know, the way college football works now, you know, you can throw enough money at a four star. You can get a guy to come to your school. But don't expect like the mass recruiting classes to be going to those lesser schools, especially when your top tier coach leaves on you.
I think I honestly, and then this is a bigger one. Uh, Oregon's office coordinator, Will Stein, is gonna go coach at Kentucky.
Really?
Well, Stein is gonna, Stein is gonna finish, Stein is gonna finish the year at Oregon.
This is fully just Ole Miss being petty.
It, it feels like, I, no, I, petty, but I think it was their negotiating tactic.
Sure.
I think that what they thought was if we say you finish the year, you, we won't let you coach any further, that maybe he would, with the hope of a national championship. And then they also knew his past and they're gonna be able to paint the picture. That's probably a hot take. But I don't necessarily, there's probably things that Kiffin could have done better throughout the process. I'm not like disregarding that, but they are hammering him.
Which, yeah.
And I think they're going too far because I don't see it.
I will agree with that, but I will still stand by, I think some of the stuff he did was a little distasteful, but also.
Which part, though?
Specifically the not speaking to the team. You can still do it even if they tell you not to. I feel like you can make your way to that one.
I don't know. Like, you can't do it at the team facility, they won't let you in, like, they literally are not gonna let you in the facility.
That's probably true, but I guess, I don't know.
And why wouldn't you want to speak to the team?
That's what I'm saying, you'd think you'd want to.
No, he would. There's, there's no, if there was a, I would struggle to believe that Lane Kiffin, if there was a way for him to speak to the team, he would have.
That's what I thought, too.